I guess we'll just get going until.
Get going if he calls and.
Then we'll include him, yeah. So, okay, so I'll introduce everybody. I'm Cecilia Rexes. I'm the editorial writer with the Tri City Herald. And we've got Lori Williams, she's the executive editor. And Matt Taylor, he's a retired editorial writer. And Ken Robertson, who is a retired executive editor. And then we have Kristen Kramer, and she's a reporter. She's in the dark there. She's, she will be monitoring this, but she will not be weighing in on our discussion when we make our recommendations. So, so anyways, I guess I'll just go ahead and ask the, a question I think that a lot of people are wondering. Your dad is on the city council. And so do you see any potential conflicts with that in the future?
No, honestly, I don't, I don't, I, to be honest with you, I really never considered myself doing what my dad does, being in government and stuff. And so I always was always giving him a hard time for going to meetings at night and, you know, standing up for, for his constituents and everything. And, and so, but then what got me was just, you know, Franklin County writing a letter and why didn't Benton County write a letter? You know, we got asked to write a letter, but we denied to team up. And, you know, because my opinion was is if you had more than one county to write a letter to the governor and, you know, hey, let's work together, try to open up sooner, let it be our choice. You know, if we want to go into an establishment or not, let it be our choice to control our county. You know, let us talk to the owners, teach them. So, long story short, to get back to the question, I don't see an issue. My dad has helped me out with, you know, my thirteen year old boy and my dad's helped me put signs up and stuff. That's really the only thing he's helped me. I don't see a conflict unless if you guys have any other questions on that part. I really don't see a, an issue. I, my goal is, is, is the relationship part of it. There needs to be a better relationship between Franklin and Benton County in a lot of ways, not just communicating with this COVID stuff, but also, you know, there's word on the street that people want to split up the judiciary system and have Franklin County and Benton County separated. Well, I don't agree with that because of costs. Once you start spreading, splitting stuff up, then cost goes up. And so let's keep it together and let's work together. So, I don't see it as an issue. I actually see it probably more of a plus to help build better relationships between the cities and the county.
So, when you were concerned about Franklin County sending a letter and Benton County not sending a letter, what were, would you have defied the governor? I mean, well, how far would you go?
No, so I wouldn't defy, no, so I wouldn't defy the governor. Because, because I think, and I'm kind of nervous because I'm talking to reporters. So don't quote me on this, all right?
No, everything's on the record. Everything's on the record, so you don't get away with it.
Okay, dang it. Okay. So, if, if I'm correct in the constitution, I believe that he has thirty days to do what he did, basically, correct? Like, he has thirty days to do what he did, right? So, my, my frustration is, okay, the thirty days is up. Let's work with the governor and say, Mr. Governor, please let us control our counties. Let us control, because every county's different, right? So, there's more agricultural in Franklin County than Benton County. There's more business in Benton County than Franklin County. You know, there's more business in Pierce County, you know, so every county's different. So let us control our counties the way we see fit. Shame on us if our hospitals get overran, which I believe they never did get overran. You know, they're built to be at capacity, and I don't even know if they were ever at capacity. I know when I looked on the health district, I believe Monday or Tuesday, as of like the eighteenth, so however many days that was, like two or three days, there was no one in the hospitals with COVID. I looked on today and we have like, I think twenty or so in the hospitals with COVID. So I know it fluctuates, but, but by all means, okay, so we consider the COVID cases, but now let's look at like drug overdose. Let's look at all these other issues, domestic violence, all these other things that are increasing because we are staying at home. So my, my, I don't want to say fight, but my desire to represent everybody here would be working with the governor directly, trying to communicate with him every single week. I say, I said before at some other, can, some other meetings, I would, I would have written him a letter every single week after the thirty day stay at home, and I feel like I would have. Because to me, they, they wrote a letter forty-two days after the thirty day stay at home, and that's what got me. That's, to me, that's forty-two days late as a business owner, owning two businesses here in the tri-cities. That affects me strongly. And so, my, my frustration is, is if you could have had Franklin County and Benton County, if you could have had Walla Walla, if you could have had all the other surrounding counties work together and work with the governor, I feel that we would be in a better place right now. Because it should be, at the end of the day, it should be the business owner's choice on the safety, and then it should be your guys' choice. If you feel safe going into a movie theater, it should be your guys' choice to feel safe. You're going to Gold's Gym that's opened up now, you know? So it should be our choice if we want to go into that establishment or not.
Thanks. It looks like we just got Jim Beaver. How are you doing, Jim?
Hey, I'm doing good. How are you?
We're good. We're good. I'm glad you were able to join us. We, we just decided to get started a little bit. We just asked Will a question. But I'll, I'll reintroduce everybody here for you. Okay, so I'm Cecilia Rexes, editorial writer with the Tri City Herald. And then we've got Lori Williams, executive editor of the Herald. And Matt Taylor, retired editorial writer for the Herald. You know Matt? Okay, great. And then Ken Robertson. You probably know Ken as well. Yeah, yeah. And then also Kristen Kramer is here as a reporter. She will not have any say in our discussion when we make our recommendation. She's here to monitor, and everything's on the record. And, okay, okay, so Will, actually, I was, because you weren't here, I just kind of opened it up and asked, asked him some questions, but we could give you guys a chance to do an opening. I forgot to do that. So if you want to give an opening, and then we'll let Will do that too, and then we'll get going again, so.
Yeah, here we go. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to everybody. My name's Jim Beaver. I've been serving the community for quite a long time, like thirty years. I'm actually a furniture guy. I'm not a long time, well, I am a longtime politician, but that wasn't my career. We had Beavers Furniture in Kennewick, and we enjoyed that for thirty-seven years. So I'm a business owner from the beginning, and that's kind of my, that's kind of my roots, if you will. Kind of grew up on Columbia Drive down in Kennewick, right across the street from Zips, and spent thirty-seven years there working and, you know, raising a family. So, I got involved in politics kind of on a fluke, but next thing you know, I'm on the Kennewick City Council. So then, I kept looking at things as they moved along, and I, and I started getting a little nervous about what was going on. And so, the more I knew, the, the more I got involved. And that's kind of where I'm at. The county, I went to the county and tried to run kind of that organization and, and have them understand the concept of what it means to be a business owner. And then, you know, try to pay the bills and pay payroll, and then try to pay everything. So that's kind of, that's my background. I did go to Washington State University in Pullman, and I do have a degree in economics, so I can tell you why some of the things that are happening are not going to work. But we can have that discussion at a different time.
Okay, great. Will, what, go ahead, Lori.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were going to have Will.
Yeah, yeah, because we just kind of, I just tried to get that one question out of the way. So go ahead, Will, if you had an opening, go for it.
Okay, thank you. So Will McKay, I grew up here, moved up here in two thousand and six, and from Meridian, Idaho off a dairy farm. Graduated from Southridge High School in ninety-nine during high school. Eagle Scout, heavily involved with sports, church activities, church as well. And then graduated from college from BYU Idaho with a construction management degree in two thousand and six. Moved back here to the tri-cities and worked for Connor Construction, actually Steve Connor, and worked for him for several years. And then in two thousand and thirteen, I started my own business. Mr. Connor was kind of just slowing up and wanting to get smaller, and he gave me his blessing to go start my own business, and so I appreciate that a bunch. He supported me a lot through the, through the years while I was getting my business started. So, then that, four kids, they're in the school district. My wife is now homeschooling, which is a lot of fun. I get a lot of phone calls during the day with a kid or two crying and screaming and taking them in my truck to give them a break. So, so we're doing that. And then, but what got me was, I never considered myself, I said a little earlier, I never really considered myself doing what I plan on doing with this. But when I was driving down the road and I hear that Franklin County was writing a letter, I wanted to see what our guys were doing, and we weren't doing anything right in the letter to the governor to help, help us out. This is after the thirty day stay at home. Everyone I've talked to gets that, gets the ship at LA, the ship at New York, the two thousand beds in Seattle, we all understood that and got that. But my frustration is, is the forty-two days letter to the governor, it was forty-two days late. So I felt, I looked into it more. There's other issues that I see in the county that I feel like I can benefit, I can make it a better place and benefit better. We are going to have some massive budget issues. I just heard this last Tuesday at nine o'clock on, on the meeting that where there's, I think it was four to five million dollars over budget right now. And then there's like a three million dollar extent, like a increase to people's budgets. And so we're going to have massive issues, and those are the things that we need to fix. But yeah, so, long story short, I'm not a politician. I'm a business guy. I have two businesses here. It's something that I looked into heavily to make sure that my businesses will be successful, but that when I step into the seat, that I'll be successful as a, as a commissioner and represent my constituents.
Okay, thanks, Will. So Jim, Will was talking about the letter that the Benton County Commissioner sent, and he, and that's what prompted him to run. He said that he thought it was way too late. And do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, we had a lot of interaction with the state health department. And we relied heavily on our own Benton Franklin, Benton Franklin Health Department to, to communicate with the state health department. Our whole issue was the state health department and the governor. And so, everything that we got, all our correspondence and our information was, the answer's no. And, you know, we kept pressuring through communication. We didn't send a letter like Franklin County, but that, I, I don't follow Franklin County's lead all the time. And so I'm like, okay, let's see how we navigate through this deal. And I totally understand how businesses felt. Again, I'm a small business owner myself, and I understand what it means to be closed and to not have any revenue. So you got to pay employees, and I get that part. But we, every, every piece of information that we received was telling me, okay, you got these steps to do. And everything that was there was working through the Benton Franklin Health District, not through the Board of County Commissioners. So I didn't have any real influence, if you, if you will. It was just the state health department and the governor and working through our own health district. I mean, I could have, I, I don't see that as, could have stood up and beat on a drum, but that's not going to solve anything. Actually, what that does is it, it makes elected officials like the governor and his staff back up and go, hey, we're not excited about Benton County, so. I wanted to travel a different path there.
Okay.
Can I comment on that real quick?
Okay.
Okay, sorry, real quick. So, my, my frustration is, is that Mr. Beaver hasn't been to the meetings. He's only been to three of the nine Benton Franklin Health meetings. That's thirty-three percent. That's an F. Then also too, Mr. Delvin, in a meeting a long time ago, about two weeks before the governor came here to Pasco, and it's on record that I'm done. I'm done speaking to the governor. I'm done dealing with him. I'm completely done. And I'm also done with constituents and people, I don't know the proper term, but I'm paraphrasing this part. I'm done with people emailing me and asking questions of what we're doing for COVID. You're not done. You're not paid to be done. You're paid to represent us, and you're also paid to go to the meetings. And to me, those health district meetings right now are more important than even going to church, because we're not going to church because, because of those issues.
Jim, you can probably respond to that if you want.
Yeah, I don't have much. I've heard this now more than once. And I've got thirty years in the system. My attend, my attendance is pretty, pretty much recorded. Okay, missed some health district meetings. I was at the Sacred Heart Children's Hospital in Spokane, so I had some other issues I was trying to handle.
Okay, thank you. Lori, did you have a question? Did I cut you off earlier?
No, that's what I was going to ask about is what they were doing besides, if they weren't writing a letter, what were they doing? And it sounds like they were trying to work through the health district channels. I guess I would move on to the, the budget shortfall questions. Maybe Will touched on those, and that was a question I was going to be asking, Jim. What, what is the budget situation that the county's facing as a result of this pandemic?
The numbers I'm looking at are about five million dollars. And so, we, we have to figure out how that's going to get solved. And that's the biggest budget shortfall I've ever seen, both from when I was at the city of Kennewick or at the county. So the gap is pretty huge. And we're going to have to have a conversation with some other elected officials and see how that, see how that program's going to work. And so, this whole thing is going to change the environment. It has already. And the other elected officials and us are going to have to sit down and talk about, hey, how's this looked in the future? I mean, that's, that's kind of how it's going to have to go that way.
So five million, I'm sorry, Jim, but five million on what's the total budget?
I don't have the total budget number. They just briefed me on the, the difference. So, the ask, the ask, which is the preliminary information that the elected officials send the commissioners, is five million dollars more than anticipated revenue. And so, that's, that's a problem.
And then, Jim, tell, tell me if I'm correct too, on the, on the meeting that I heard, they are also asking for three more million dollars, correct? Like your, the, the programs inside the county, is that correct?
Yeah, they, they want three point two million or.
Yeah, I can't remember the exact number.
Three point two million, that's the increases. And then, the other ancillary, I wouldn't even really call it ancillary, but it's, it moves that number to five million dollars. And I'm really budget conscious. I've been a business owner for years. I'm really conservative. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, how do we move forward? I like to do that one step at a time. And so, we're going to start whittling at that number. So here we go. I mean, okay, so anybody can ask for whatever they want, and then we see how it plays out.
So, can I get a little clarification, Jim? The shortfall, do you have an indication of the reason for that? Is that because sales tax collections are down markedly because of the lack of commercial activities since March?
Well, it's like across the board. And so, we, we've got everything, everything's been down. Construction has slowed, sales tax has slowed. Everything has just slowed down, and there's no way to adapt when you have a budget that is X amount of dollars. So they don't, they don't adjust. And what I mean by they is, government, government doesn't adjust like private business does. I mean, if I didn't have any money, I'd go down to the furniture store and I would start looking at what I'm doing. I would start going, hey, we, I can't pay everybody, and we got to fix this. So, you know, my, my response to a budget issue when I was in private business was immediate. It was like the next morning. In government, whether it's the city or county, they adopt a budget for two years or one year, and then they just, they work that budget out till the end. And now we're at the end. So they can't, they don't adapt as fast as the private sector.
So I guess the question is, is if there's going to be cuts before the end of the year? Is that what you're evaluating right now?
Yeah, I want to know, you know, okay, start counting employees. Because eighty percent of the budget, eighty, eighty-five percent of the budget is personnel and benefits. And so what, what are you going to do? So the commissioners, in my mind, they just have to sit down and go, what's the priority? So what, what are you going to do? You're going to, okay, you're going to be in the jail business? You're going to be in law enforcement? You're going to be, what are you going to do? You got building permits? You got, okay. Some of this other stuff that you've been spending money on, we're probably not going to do that right now. It's not unlike most people who have, who manage their family budgets. You know, we're not going on vacation because we don't have the money this year.
And what's your timeline for coming up with those answers?
It's going to be by November, because we got to, we have to submit a budget, and we have to pass that budget by the end of the year, and we got to turn it into the state auditor's office.
So you're not talking about this year's spending?
No, this year's spending is already in place. So that money has been budgeted. It won't, it'll be the end of the year. So it'll be, it'll be twenty-one to twenty-three.
Matt, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Jim, Will has told us why he is running for this office. You sound to me, and I've known you for thirty-three years, you sound to me like a big break. And I'm wondering, why are you running for the office? Surely it's not just to be a bright fake on spending. It's got to have some plans for the future. When you were mayor of Kennewick, you were a big, you were a charger. You were really going after new things and identifying problems. I don't think you've done that today. All you've done is said you're looking for how the money's being spent. But do you, what, I'd like to hear where you think it ought, where it ought to be spent.
Well, it's, so when I was the mayor of Kennewick and I was on the city council, I pushed really hard. And I was, I was unbelievable, and you're right. And we had a good time when I was there. I really liked our interaction. Different game plan. So as a mayor, my role was different. I go to the county, and I get that. Everything we do at the county is criminal justice related. So there's no real, there's no ribbon cuttings, there's no, it's a different, it's a different animal. So we, we're in the jail business. Eighty percent of the budget is committed to just the justice system. And so it, it changes the way, the scope. And so, I just had to adjust to the scope. And then I had to, and I still, I still have to adjust to how that all plays out. And so it's deputies and corrections officers and mental health people and drug awareness. So it's a different arena. And I'll be honest with you. When I was the mayor of Kennewick, I used to chastise the county commissioners. I'd get mad at them for not, you know, helping me out or giving me some money so I could do some things and yada, all that stuff. I mean, I was, well, anyway, that's all, I did all that. I became a county miss, county commissioner, and I, and now I understand what they do. And again, eighty percent of the budget is criminal justice related. They're in the jail business. I mean, that's all it is. So it changes, it's a, it's just a different perspective about how things work. And then, what we do is we answer to the state of Washington. So we're on the last, we're on the last rung of the step ladder when it comes to the state. So we don't do anything unless the state tells us it's okay, or unless the state says, hey, you get to do it. So it's a different place. Took me, took me a little while to figure that out. But that's, that's where we are.
I think we need to let Will have a chance to talk. Will, you were aware of this budget. You brought it up. What are your initial thoughts on?
Well, so I know, like Jim's saying, being a business owner, I know that business, you know, private businesses move a little faster on budgeting than the government. Can I, can we mute? I'm getting a lot of feedback, playback on, I think it's Mr. Beaver's. It's like hard to talk on. I don't know if it's.
I'm not hearing what you are.
Sorry, I was getting, I'm just getting a bunch of playback, and I, I think it might be the phone line. And I guess I can shrink it up or turn my volume down while I'm talking.
We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, so, getting back to the budget. So obviously, like what he's saying, the government's going to take longer to move. But just two weeks ago, there's a meeting, a gentleman comes and comes into the meeting, and he made a mistake. There was a bid that was like four thousand and some change, some dollars for remodeling part of the courthouse. And he came in and said he made a mistake. The price increased roughly over seven thousand dollars. Anything above five thousand dollars, we're supposed to get three bids. Do you want me to go back and get three bids? Do you want me just to go ahead and move forward with this, this work order? We have money in the budget. It's going to work. What would you like me to do? Mr. Beaver, and I quote, I've always learned, money's on the table, I'm going to take it and run. Right when he said that, I know he was joking about it, but right when he said that, that's, that's the mindset that I, I feel that, that he's missing, that, that he's been doing this for thirty years, which I appreciate his service. I completely appreciate his service. But we have to remember where this money's coming from. And even though it's two thousand dollars, that two thousand dollars adds up, and adds up, and adds up on every single project. So we have to be a lot more mindful on our budget and where we are spending it. So the commissioners do have a say. They could have easily gone to that gentleman and said, hey, we're going to stop the work. I do want you to go get three more bids, and so we can get a better price instead of wasting two thousand dollars. Again, it's only two thousand dollars, but again, it adds up. And so, there are massive issues with the budget. But at the same time, the commissioners need to spend more time in the books finding out what's getting spent and what shouldn't be getting spent.
So, I have a question for you on that.
Yes, sir.
Two thousand dollar example. How much staff time do you think it takes to do the evaluation of the bids? Make sure that they're, they meet all the specs? And then after you've done that, that you then sit down and make the decision and say you go with a new contractor, contractor. And that new contractor has to come in and get up to speed. Are you really saving money?
Well, so.
Two thousand dollars, if you're talking twenty thousand or two hundred thousand, I'd say probably it's well worth it, but.
No, that's, that's a great question. No, that's a great question. And so in my company, so I'd have to know how this gentleman's paid. If he's paid by the hour, then it might be to where it balances out. But if he's salary, if he's paid by salary, then he, then that's just an extra job that he's doing, and he's getting paid salary. So you're not losing any money. And those people that are already bidding the num, bidding it are, I'm almost certain, are already set up with the county to do jobs for the county. And so, when I'm putting a bid together, I'm not charging the owner to bid against two other contractors. As a contractor myself, I'm not charging him to say, okay, I'm going to put this bid together, but I'm going to charge you a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars to put the bid together. That's my time, that's my salary to, to be able to bid. So honestly, I don't see waste, I, to me, I see you saving two thousand dollars. Unless if that gentleman is paid by.
I'm not talking about your time. I'm talking about the county employees, and I expect they're mostly hourly.
I, Mr. Beaver, you might have to answer that. I, I believe that that gentleman's price salary, the guy that came in and said he apologizes for making a mistake.
Well, so here's the issue. The issue is, do you stop the project? Do you rebid? You know, a mistake was made. It's a rather large construction project, so, okay, mistakes are made. And what I've always said, mistakes are made, let's get past the mistake. So what's that going to take? I learned that from my father, and we've been in business for a long time. What's the mistake? We'll get over the mistake, and let's get on. The, the issue is, do we stop? The, the issue is, do we stop the project? Do we halt this deal? Do we tell the other contractors to go home for a week? I, I, okay. So how do we fix the problem? So I'm kind of in the, the mode of being a problem solver. Okay, understand, understand it's two thousand dollars. And he was apologetic, I get it. Something was left out. Okay, it's a, it's not a, it's a project that's, uh, really big. So let's, let's see if we can't finish it. Let's get down the road, let's solve the problem. So I'm in the mode of solving problems. Um, and I understand he, you know, the gentleman was apologetic and I get, I get all of that. But we're not gonna hold a multimillion dollar project, uh, because mistakes are made. And if you think that's the first mistake that's ever made on a construction project, uh, let me, let me let you know. And Mr. McKay should know that more than anybody. Uh, we've done all kinds of things in my life and things didn't work out, so.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I know it's just two thousand dollars. And again, I agree with Mr. Beaver to try to keep things going. I don't know the full detail of the project, but the, but it's more of an analogy of trying to save money. And yeah, it's two thousand dollars. Is it gonna make or break a multimillion dollar project? No. But it's the mindset of joking around during a meeting when that money's coming from us constituents, when we're already stretching tight with our funds. Hey, uh, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you, sorry. I have a question for Jim. Uh, as far as saving money, one of the concerns I think the Benton County commissioners have had is, um, sharing court costs with Franklin County. Could you elaborate on, um, why, why you want to split the count, uh, split the court system up? And, and how much money would that really save the county, do you think?
Well, I'm not really pressured on splitting the court system up.
Okay.
Um, that's not my issue. My issue is the fact that we pay seventy percent of the cost and Franklin County pays thirty. And it's based on some formula that they put together, I don't know, maybe back when I was in high school. I don't, I don't know. But if you're gonna be a partner in something, I, I think you should be fifty-fifty. So they have, they have fifty percent of the vote, but they only pay thirty percent of the cost. And to me, that's, that's really not a partner. So that, that's my issue with that whole deal. I, I don't have, I'm not on a mission to break up the court system. Uh, I think it works pretty good. And I've, uh, spoke to the judges about it and said, hey, this, this is my issue. It's the, it's the fact that we pay, and we being Benton County, the residents of Benton County pay seventy percent of the cost. So that's, there we go, that's my issue.
Jim, wasn't it based on the caseload? Have they done a caseload analysis lately to see the, because I, I, you know, covered courts years ago and I thought it was, uh, the seventy-thirty split had to do with that.
Well, they based it on population originally.
Okay.
And then they said, well, what we'll do is we'll turn to caseloads. They said, okay. And I was mad about it when I was the mayor. So I'm like, I, how do we keep paying? Cause the city of Kennewick paid. So, okay, we're paying, we're paying the county and the county's doing that. And so, I mean, come on.
I guess my question is, how come this hasn't gotten fixed? If you've been doing this for thirty years, how can we help and fix this issue?
And then it's also, you know, fairness can be different, right? Like Lori said, you know, who, you know, Benton County does have a bigger population than, you know, unless, you know, one county is way more, there's a lot more crime, right? So, so there, um, yeah, so the fact that, you know, they're going to try to break, break it up rather than looking at real, the real source of the challenges is, that's the question, right? Why aren't they getting to the heart of the question rather than trying to split, split the courts?
Yeah, and so to me, as partnerships, how partnerships work out is sixty, forty, I'm putting in sixty percent, my partner's gonna put in forty percent, right? So that's, we need to look at is the counties, for me, money-wise, but then also the, like you're talking about, the, the case counts. So my, my frustration is, is Mr. Beaver's been doing, you know, arguing this since he's been the mayor. Well, how come this issue hasn't been resolved yet? Is it because Mr. Beaver is the only one, the only vote for this? Or, you know, I mean, I know it's gotta be a, probably voted stuff in and everything. So is Mr. Beaver the only one that's standing up for, for, for this getting changed?
No, I never have been. I've had city council members and I've had county commissioners on my side, so.
So, so then what's holding it back?
I don't have that issue. So again, it's a bi-county operation and, uh, when you get into a bi-county operation, you have, uh, different situations. So there's motivation from Franklin County that's, that, that's not shared by the Benton County Board. And that's, that's just what partnerships are all about. Not the only inequitable situation that I've seen, uh, in the bi-county operations. So that's where we're at with that. We've been trying for years to, uh, renovate the Juvenile Justice Center. And, uh, our partners, Franklin County, uh, has said over and over, we don't have any money, so you do it all by yourself. Well, okay, bi-county operation, bi-county function. And now the citizens of Benton County are gonna foot the bill for all of it. And so that's why that hasn't been done.
Okay, um, I, I had another, another question for you, Jim. Um, like you said, you've been, um, a public servant in the community for like thirty years and you barely squeaked out of the primary. And you don't have the, um, backing of the Benton County Republican Party. Can you explain why you think that is?
Uh, they change their mind all the time. I went down and met with them when I ran against Claude. And, uh, which I thought was kinda interesting because we met in the basement of Bill Lamson's building downtown. And Bill was my campaign chairman. So I got the Republican, uh, committee there and they're going, well, you know, we're gonna support Claude. I said, well, that's interesting. You know, my campaign chairman is the guy that owns this building. And he's a big supporter of you guys. So anyway, it, I get it. Some people decide not to support you, some people don't. Um, so my whole issue is, uh, I'm gonna do the best job I can do while I'm involved. And, um, if nobody, I mean, there's gonna come a time where maybe everybody says, hey, Jim, that's enough. And I understand that. So, uh, I'm gonna do the best job I can do. I'm gonna do what I think is right. And there might be a day where I'm not there. I mean, I, that's kinda where I'm at.
Okay. Will, do you have any thoughts? You did get the Benton County endorsement from the Republican Party, right?
Yeah, yeah, I did. Um, I, uh, yeah, I interviewed, actually, Jolie Signan and I interviewed on the same day, um, and stuff. And I got an endorsement, uh, for that. I got a lot of other endorsements, um, through several local business owners, um, Tri-City Realtors, or Washington State Tri-City Realtors Association endorsement. Um, and a couple other, um, uh, people have supported me a lot. So again, I, I think they're endorsing me. I'm, I'm, I'm here to fight. I'm here to defend the Constitution. I'm here to defend our families. I'm here to defend our churches and I'm here to defend the constituents in Benton County. And I think, I, I, I heard an analogy, if I can have like thirty seconds on this analogy. I heard analogy on the radio the other day. Imagine where you were at to, on, uh, this, on, uh, September eleventh. I was at college waking up, it's like seven-thirty in the morning. I turned the news, I heard to turn the news on, I turned the news on. I see the one tower falling down, the newscast people are saying, oh my goodness, what's happening? And oh, did that pilot have a heart attack? Did he, did they miscalculate or what hap, how that happened? And all of a sudden, the second tower fell down, uh, with an airplane. And then we realized we were under attack. That's where we're at right now, right now. Our first tower fell down when COVID hit us and we lost all of our constitutional rights. And now we're at the second tower of possibly losing a lot of other things if we don't come out and vote. For, for our president, for our governor, for all our local leaders and everything. And it's very important this year that we can lose a lot of stuff happening, uh, in this, this upcoming election. And I think people see that in me, that I'm here to go to the meetings that we're elected to be on to support and defend our, our, our local people. Um, I, that's all I really have to say on that, that one.
The way, we lost all our constitutional rights, can you explain that?
No, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying we have lost, I'm saying we possibly
You said we lost all our constitutional rights.
Okay, sorry, I mis-said that then. When did I, what, what part, what did I say that at?
You said that after COVID, we lost all our constitutional rights.
Oh, sorry, so no, we didn't lose our, I mean, we lost our rights to be, basically, it's unconstitutional for us to wear a mask. It's unconstitutional for the governor to do what he did, okay? And so that's what I'm saying is, is we're losing our freedoms by allowing this stuff to happen. And so go ahead, do the thirty-day shutdown like he, I believe, is in the const, Washington State Constitution for the governor to control us and shut us down for a state of emergency. So go right ahead and do that. But after that thirty-day state home, it should be on us. It should be the, the county commissioners to help out and work with the local leaders and work with the Benton Franklin Health District to get us open and educate all of the owners, all of the staff, everybody, and have it your choice to, like I said earlier, I don't know if you're on, go into the movies, go in the restaurant. If you don't feel safe, stay at home. But let us make the choice if we wanna go to Walmart or if we wanna go to a small mom and pop store. So that, so me, yeah, so we didn't lose our constitutionals and our guns and our rights and amendments and everything. We just lost basically part of our freedom.
So then who has the responsibility for public health?
So that, so I believe that the public health should be the Benton Franklin Health District, which they are. But at the same time though, right now, you look at our, our numbers right now. So our numbers are, we had two deaths, two or three deaths in August, and I think we have two deaths in September in COVID. But yet, we're, where are we still in phase, we're still in one point five?
We have three deaths today, Will, three deaths today.
Okay, sorry, so I missed that, I missed that. I, I looked at it earlier this morning and this morning just had two deaths. So did, I think there, I didn't look at
Yesterday, three deaths today.
Yeah, we had one, yeah, we had one death earlier in September and then one death yesterday. I didn't see the new updates, that's like what you're saying. So five deaths in September, okay?
No, under than sixty-five deaths.
In September?
Since the start.
Okay, well, I understand, I understand that, but look at our death count.
My death count in September is several.
Is five.
It's, it's more than five in September.
Okay, so as, as of now, what you're saying is Benton Franklin Health District is incorrect then? Because I looked at it this morning and it said two.
Two for yesterday, two from yesterday, three from today makes five, and that's in the two days period, so.
Yeah, there's only five deaths in September is what I'm saying.
No, there's You are right that it's lower than it was
Yeah.
Last month, that's true.
Well, last month, there was only two deaths in August.
No.
On, on, on the, if you look at the county, there's only showing two deaths in August.
I think Aaron might not be looking at that chart right, but I have to tell you, those charts are difficult to look at.
Okay, so I might, I must be looking at it wrong. Either way, you look at the death rates now versus two or three months ago, okay? We should be in phase two. There's other counties in the states that are worse off than we are, having more deaths than us. And they're in phase two and two point five. One of them's in phase three. And we're not even in phase two yet. So to me, there's no, there is no working together between the two counties and the health district.
Wow. Here, I thought you were a very reasonable man.
Excuse me?
There's two people on this panel right now who are a good deal more likely to, uh, be affected by coronavirus than you are. I'm one of them. You telling me that the state doesn't have, that the governor does not have the right? Your constitutional privileges are erased because, uh, the governor has said, we want you to wear masks. We, you can't go into the restaurants you want to at the times you do, until we get this under control. That seems like a protection that you're willing to take from me to protect your business. And I, I can understand the feeling and the, the desire to protect your business and that it is an important element in what's going on with all of us. But I'll just be honest with you, you sound like a crackpot to me when you start talking about it's a gov, uh, that your, your rights have been violated uh, because you have to wear a mask or you're told you want to. And if a policeman that spots you might do something about it. There is a law against you going naked in the street. You, are you gonna protest that too? Is that, uh, a constitutional right you have to go naked in the street?
So I, I honestly don't know the ans, answer about running naked in the street. But a, again, my, my
Figure it's true. I mean, people are arrested for indecent exposure.
Yes, sir.
Regularly.
Yes, sir. So my, my, again, my, my thing is, is at the very beginning, every, everyone in the thirty days, I, I think even the first three months, everyone was getting this because no one knew what was going on, correct? So no one knew the health, the, the, the virus is going crazy. This was the world end. I mean, that's why the president moved both ships to, to both sides of the country and, and our governor did the two thousand beds in Seattle because we were preparing for the apocalypse, for the worst, worst, you know, the end of the world, basically. But what I'm, what I'm trying to get at now is, is are, this, this, numbers are coming out and the statistics are coming out to where, yes, at your age, sir, you are more prone to have a health issue with COVID than I am, than my kids are, correct? But my, my argument is, is, okay, let's look at some other numbers. Let's look at the domestic violence. Let's look at the drug overdoses. Let's look at all those other numbers now where all those people are staying home, okay? So, so my thing is, so I'll give you, excuse me, can I, let me just, let me finish real quick.
Unless you have numbers, I think you're being irresponsible.
Okay, I'm just gonna give you one more
Any of those numbers? Do you have any indications? Have you gotten anything from Benton County Justice? That gives you reason to believe that there is a big surge in that?
So like I, so I must have, I must have misread from, from Lori on the, the number of the deaths. And I'll have to look at that number again.
I'm talking about what you're just bringing up.
Okay.
I'll accept you may have misread the chart. I've been following very closely.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad you brought it back up because I will tell you, Washington has one of the lowest death rates in the nation. We are in the bottom, I believe roughly eight or ten states in terms of our death rate per hundred thousand population. The states that have, had governors who were lax, for the most part, have much higher. Check the numbers of South Dakota and North Dakota. And then check the numbers of Washington, not the total numbers, but the death rate numbers. I think you're speaking from a position where you have not done your research.
Okay, so let me just, let me, let me, I, and I agree, my, I'm not good on that part of the numbers and I'll look into that, sir. But my, my, my justification is, the other day, my ten-year-old girl, my seven-year, eight-year-old girl, my five-year-old girl, hey dad, can we go sell, uh, a lemonade stand with some brownies and cookies on the corner? Go right ahead. My wife posted on our, on our neighborhood Facebook feed, hey, some girls are selling lemonade, brownies and cookies. By all means, stop by and take a look at it. One lady posted, posts on the Facebook page, they're not wearing masks. So all, obviously, all of a sudden, the Facebook feed blows up. Well, then one lady that I know, she posted it, let's end it at this. If you don't feel safe, stay at home. And that, that's my point right there.
Okay, we're, um, getting close to the end here. And I had told the candidates, they could ask each other a question, unless there's any other questions from the board on a different topic? Lori or Martine? Lori, you're muted. You're muted, Lori?
I was just gonna say, Will, Will told us he had to get to an appointment, so we probably should get to that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I have something.
Okay.
I, I want Jim to talk about the masks and
Okay. Jim, yeah, wearing the mask.
Yeah, you gotta wear a mask. Plain and simple. So, uh, the state health department has indicated, you know, these are the steps to take to get out of this deal. And the road's gonna be long. And so, uh, it'll be important for us to follow directions, you know, stay in line with the, uh, the professionals. And I learned a long time ago, if you, you really wanna be successful, listen to the people who know what they're talking about. So it's not me as a county commissioner, it's the state health department, it's our own health department and what And what, I may not like what they say, but I'm gonna follow what they say I'm supposed to do. So I'm hopeful we get out of this situation.
Okay, Jim, do you, do you have a question for Will?
Uh, no, I don't have it.
You don't have a question for Will? Okay. Will, do you have a question for Jim that you'd like to bring up?
Nope, good, thank you.
You're good. Okay, okay. Well, thank you both.
Then I have a question.
Oh, Lori's got a question, okay.
We're saving time for you guys, just very quickly. Um, Will, we, there've been, um, a lot of issues with Sheriff Hatcher uh, and the county commissioners. I'm just wondering, um, what your position is in dealing with, um, some of the issues that they've, uh, dealt with uh, this year with the union grievance that's been filed, the recall effort. What, what, what's your, um, position on how to handle that?
Um, so obviously, I haven't, I haven't read any of the documents on what he's, you know, uh, for. I do know some of the stuff what he's, um, accused for and everything. I do think that, um, so I support the sheriff's seat a hundred percent. Um, the sheriff to me is our last line of defense on the, on constitution and a lot of other things too. So I support that seat. And I believe that it should be our, us that votes the sheriff in. And so I believe that a man is guilty until proven guilty. Um, there's a couple of things that I, that I'm questioned on that I'm still looking into. Um, so, uh, I believe a year to two years ago, the commissioners lost a lawsuit, uh, one point two, one point five, around there, a million dollar lawsuit on wrongful termination. They got defended through the county and everything, so, which is completely fine. They got defended, they still lost the lawsuit, so they were in the wrong. Um, but, so now the sheriff isn't getting defended through the county. So I don't know the whole parameters of that. Again, now if the sheriff is doing something that's not during work, then I can see why he's not getting supported through the county. But yet, if he's guilty for stuff that's happening while he's working, then he should be defended through the county. Um, so that's the only thing that I have an issue with and I'm still looking into. Again, with me just being a, a public guy, I don't have like all the documents and stuff of what's happening, but, um, so long story short, I support the seat, it should be elected. Um, again, if he's guilty, uh, then, then there's an appointed, uh, part of the, of, of how we get another sheriff in, or just like how Mr. Hatcher was, um, appointed, I think before this last term. Uh, he was appointed for a little bit and then got, and then was voted in as a sheriff.
So you think that the county should be paying for his recall?
If, yeah, if, if, if it was, if the stuff that he's guilty for, or I'm an accused for, uh, was while he's working. I, I believe that if it was while he's, you know, up in his cabin in Montana or whatever, doing something, then he's not, uh, uh, as the sheriff at that time, then yeah, should be, then he shouldn't be defended. So there's still things that I don't have enough information on, on how that all works. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, yeah, essentially.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything, uh, Jim, you wanna say about the situation with the sheriff?
Yeah, we went down that road and so the sheriff got himself in trouble. Uh, the issues with, uh, employment law, so we have to abide by the Washington State employment laws. Uh, labor and industry, union contracts, we got grievances. I think we, we're up to two lawsuits right now by employees for harassment. And so, you know, our job as county commissioners is to try to protect the, uh, citizens of our county. And so when lawsuits get filed and they're a million or two million dollars, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to not make the citizens be, uh, you know, liable or, uh, uh, well, foot the bill. So there, there you go. And I, I had a conversation with the sheriff in his office and I tried to talk to him about some of the stuff that I was hearing and things that were going on. And then that, that deal didn't go very well, so I, I get it. Um, the thing about the county is they're separately elected officials. So the sheriff doesn't really answer to me. He gets a budget and then he kind of tells me, hey, don't, don't tell me how to run my business. And so, okay, I won't tell you how to run your business, here's your money. And then, uh, you know, whatever. So I can't really direct, uh, anything that's happening in his, uh, department or his division or anything like that. Uh, we did make a move to move the Corrections, uh, Department over to the Commissioner's Office. And, uh, I have, uh, I've got support from the, uh, Corrections Officers for my reelection, as a matter of fact. So they're like, Jim, it's the greatest thing you ever did. And so we're trying to, we're trying to solve that problem. His personal life is his own business. I mean, I don't, I don't get in that. I don't, I don't get in the weeds on that deal, but, uh, you know, performance is, is how, what we talk about.
And wasn't that, weren't you concerned about cost control was one of the issues with the jail?
Yeah, we couldn't get a handle on, uh, the money that was being spent. And, uh, every time I talked to somebody from the cities, uh, they were livid about the costs of the jail. Of course, I was livid about it when I was the mayor. So that went on for eighteen years. And we would drive out to Prosser and argue with them about what we're paying for jail costs. Which is ironic, because now I'm a commissioner and they drive out and argue with me about jail costs. Um, Marie Mosley, the city manager of Kennewick, just sent me an email. Cause they're getting ready to negotiate the jail contract. So that's how that plays out. And you have union contracts and you got collective bargaining agreements. You can't, these things are all tied in where you can't really have any kind of influence. I mean, you, okay, you negotiate the deal and that's, there's the price. So I don't know. I, I get it.
Zilia, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm gonna get the hang of this. Um, I just wanted to thank both, uh, candidates for, um, participating. And I wanted to mention that Martine Ballad has joined us a little late, but he's a community rep who's on the edit board, so I wanted to mention, mention Martine. So was there anything else? I?
All right, I thought it was three, my bad.
That's okay, that's okay. So, thank you very much. I know, Will, you had another appointment, so.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, so if, um, I think I'll keep the board members on for just a little bit longer, but, um, we'll let Jim and, and we'll go, so.
Real quick question, who is Kristen with?
She's with us, she's a reporter.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, she's not going to be involved in our recommendation process.
I just, I couldn't remember who you.
Yep.
Yeah, well, just for your information, the reporters sent in because the sessions are on the record.
Oh, okay.
And they might be writing election advances, dance stories, so.
Great, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks.